Okay, good afternoon everybody. Welcome to Norwich City Council Licensing Subcommittee. It's Friday the fourteenth of April two thousand and twenty-three. And we're here to consider a review of a premises licence Sherbet Lemon thirty-five Prince of Wales Road. I'll start with apologies please. And there are none. Declarations of interest? Again, there are none. Thank you. So we'll move on to the review of a premises licence. I understand, Michelle, representing the police licensing team, you'd like us to discuss some elements below the line, is that correct?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I've got the body cam footage that I would like to go into in detail. And hopefully we can do separately if possible privately. Other than that, most other factors I'm happy to discuss.
Okay, thank you. And we've noted a couple of names, principally the name of a third-party contractor that we may wish to consider in private if we talk about that contractor. And the rest of it can be above the line. Is everyone in agreement with that on the committee panel? Thank you, yes. Okay, so we'll proceed with the applicant, and that is Environmental Protection. And Vicky, you're going to introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you. And so yeah, this is an application for review of Sherbet Lemon, and Prince of Wales Road in Norwich. We've wanted to apply for this review under the prevention of public nuisance. Okay? So I wish to apply for this review of the premises and the prevention of public nuisance objective. And because the venue has affected local residents to such an extent that would be no one's has been served. The recording from the resident's living room was noted to have been eighteen decibels. Above the already loud noise from Prince of Wales Road, it was dominated by a bass element, which would have further penalised the noise level with a further six decibels as the frequency increases. As the frequency increases, the level of noise spilloidy of the bass element. The resident has commented that this is one of the least noisy events from the premises. So we can only be sure that more noisy events have occurred. And the resident has confirmed that was definitely coming from Sherbet Lemon on Prince of Wales Road. Other residents would have also been affected by the noise, but have not made any recent complaints. So the evidence which we have to support this is that the premises have fallen conditions attached to the licence, which appear not to have been followed, and that was the doors. Number twenty-four doors will not be kept closed except for access and aggression during provision of regulated entertainment. Windows will also be kept closed during the period when amplified music takes place. Twenty-five speakers will be positioned away from the doors and windows to minimise the possibility of music noise escaping. And twenty-six, the volume of any amplified music will be controlled by the noise limiting device set to determine by the local framework of health service. If these conditions were complied with, then it would have not been possible that nuisance was occurring at any residential property, that with nearest property being eighteen metres away from the front of the premises. And it's because of these grounds that we would like to wish to review the premises licence of Sherbet Lemon.
Okay, thank you very much. It occurs to me that I may have missed out a chunk of the meeting by not asking Rachel to introduce the actual report. And so apologies for that, that's entirely my fault. So we'll do it the other way around. And Rachel, if you wouldn't mind just introducing the report, describe the extra papers that we've got and any other evidence. Thank you, and apologies.
Thank you Chair. And the purpose of the report today, members are asked in accordance with delegation licensing functions contained in Norwich City Council Statement of Licensing Policy, Licensing Act two thousand and three, to consider an application by Richard Daving, Public Protection Officer for Norwich City Council, to review the premises licence in respect of Sherbet Lemon thirty-five Prince of Wales Road Norwich NR one one VG. Your determination will be in accordance with the Licensing Act of two thousand and three, guidance issued under section one eight-two of the Licensing Act two thousand and three, and Norwich City Council's Statement of Licensing Policy. The report then details corporate priorities. The report itself. Review applications. The Act provides a mechanism by which, following the grant of a premises licence, a responsible authority, e.g. trade and standards, or any other person, a resident living in the vicinity of the premises, for example, may ask the licensing authority to review the licence because of matters arising at premises in connection with any of the four licensing objectives, the prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, protection of public nuisance, and protection of children from harm. The licensing authority must advertise the review by displaying a notice at, on or near the site of the premises to which the application relates, and at the main offices of the licensing authority. Notification of an application is also displayed on the city council's website. The Act provides the licensing authority with a range of powers that it may exercise on determining a review where it considers them appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. However, the licensing authority may decide that no action is necessary if it finds that the review does not require it to take any steps appropriate to promote the licensing objectives. Where a licensing authority considers action under its statutory powers is necessary, it may take any of the following steps. To modify the conditions of the premises licence, which includes adding new conditions or any alteration or omission of existing condition, for example, by reducing the hours of opening or by requiring door supervisors at particular times. To exclude a licensable activity from the scope of the licence. To remove the designated premises supervisor, for example, because they consider that the problems are a result of poor management. To suspend the licence for a period not exceeding three months. Or to revoke the licence. It should be noted that modifications of conditions and exclusions of licensable activities may be imposed either permanently or for a temporary period of up to three months. The following parties have a right of appeal to the magistrate's court if they're agreed by the licensing authority's decision. The applicant for the review, the holder of the premises licence, and any other person who has made a relevant representation in relation to the application. So the application to review the premises of the licence in respect of Sherbet Lemon thirty-five Prince of Wales Road Norwich has been received from Richard Daving, Public Protection Officer for Norwich City Council. And a copy of this application is attached to appendix A. The grounds for review fall under the licensing objectives, the prevention of public nuisance, as explained by Vicky Hopps, who's representing the EP today. A copy of the existing licence and operating schedule is attached to appendix B to the report. And the current premises licence holder is Fat Fox Pizza Den Limited and the DPS, Richard Chisnall. There is a right of appeal to the magistrate's court within twenty-one day notification of this decision. Any decision that the committee may choose to make will not take immediate effect. It will only come into effect when the appeal period is over or if an appeal is lodged once that appeal is disposed of. And the representation is received. Responses from responsible authorities are as follows. Police sent in a letter of support for their review hearing, which is attached to appendix C. The food and safety team of the council commented following a food hygiene inspection at the premises. And this is attached to appendix D. And the EP representations we've already heard. And there are no financial implications for the report. And it is recommended members consider the review application of the premises licence in accordance with Licensing Act of two thousand and three and subsequent regulations, guidance issued under section one eight-two of the Licensing Act of two thousand and three, and Norwich City Council's Statement of Licensing Policy. And the appendices are A, the application for, B, a copy of the current premises licence, C, police representation, D, food and safety team comments. And you should have all received late papers. These are eight email attachments from Michelle at the police and a couple of later emails which contain comments from the DPS at the premises, Richard Chisnall.
Okay, thank you very much. So we've, appendix C from the police outlines the evidence as a representative. And evidence is supplied within other documents that we've received today. So we all have a copy of that. So thank you. And we've heard from the applicant in the wrong order, so that was my fault, apologies for that. Now, I think we'll hear also from Michelle with some further detail about why this has come to review, please.
Chair, if I could just get a bit of legal advice in advance on that. You've heard the application is on the grounds of noise nuisance, and that's the only box ticked. You'll know that the police wish to bring evidence to this review regarding crime and disorder. The legal advice is that it's appropriate for you to hear that even if the application did not note that as a ground. It's not a matter that will take the licence holder by surprise. The licence holder has received the necessary paperwork, I can see the grounds. And your obligation under the Act is fifty, section fifty-two License Act, before determining the application, your holder hearing, to consider the review application and any relevant representations. They are defined in subsection seven as representations which are relevant to one or more of the licensing objectives. I don't see any prohibition on you considering matters beyond noise nuisance. And I think it would be appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives to do so. And frankly inappropriate administratively to fail to take into account matters that are relevant to any of the licensing objectives for review application. Chair.
Okay, thank you David. That is actually very useful and noted by the committee. So in essence, we have considered all the evidence that we're going to hear today as part of the review, and not just the noise complaint that was brought by Environmental Protection. So with that, Michelle, can you give us some more details please about the evidence that you have?
Thank you Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. This premise first came to my attention to me last summer when the venue was advertising dance events for entertainment planned to take place on both floors. I knew the licence had restrictions on the lower floor, so I arranged for a site meeting with the premises licence holder and DPS, Mr Chisnall, and with the licensing manager of Norwich City Council, Tiffany Bentley, to discuss this. At this meeting, we went through the conditions attached to the premises licence. And Mr Chisnall was informed that he would need to submit temporary event notices for events to take place on the lower floor until a permanent variation to the licence was applied for. Since that time, the police have made a number of concerns, had a number of concerns about the venue. These concerns relate to reports of poor management, which include breaches of conditions, reports about the lack of control of patrons both inside and outside the premises, and patrons being highly intoxicated due to drugs. During earlier meetings with the DPS, the initial concern was due to the lack of understanding of conditions attached to the licence. These related to noise restrictions and insufficient numbers of SIA staff on duty. Mr Chisnall had advised that he'd initially experienced issues with security staff letting him down, but he felt that he had resolved this. The DPS initially listened to advice and recommendations, and the immediate response following my letter to him on the twenty-sixth of August showed some positive measures were taking place. Overall, although some improvements were witnessed, not all the issues have been resolved, and the ongoing issues specifically relating to the excessive noise have remained. Previously during police visits, the DPS has often been found at the other premises, the pizza shop next door, which she also owns. The advice was given both verbally and by letter to Mr Chisnall on the twenty-sixth of August, sixteenth December, and on the nineteenth of December, requesting that he was more on-site at Sherbet Lemon and more engaging with officers. To quote from my letter on the nineteenth of December, this premises needs to be your priority. The chronology outlines a summary of the incidents and visits which have occurred since last August of last year. And as you can see, the number of issues relating to policing concerns have reduced since Christmas. However, the venue hasn't been opening as frequently, and when they have, the numbers have been particularly low. So this could possibly be due to the new year lull. So as much as I hope permanent improvements have been made, this may not be a true reflection. I would like to highlight to you a couple of significant points within the chronology. The police report from the fourth of December describes the venue being particularly poor. The detailed report on the chronology highlights the issues that were found during the visit. I'm hopefully going to show you the body cam footage in a bit, which gives a real insight to what the officers found on the night. This report and footage provides evidence of excessive music, large group of people congregating up the front of the premises and spreading out onto the pavement, a lack of control of the premises by staff, and high levels of intoxication due to drugs, with one male who police had to call an ambulance for. The body cam footage of the fourth of December shows at least three officers trying to assist with a heavily intoxicated male who was unable to walk or communicate. The venue failed to offer any assistance to this vulnerable male, and I do have concerns as to what would have happened to him if police hadn't ever intervened and called an ambulance. The chronology references officers reporting of excessive noise at the premises and asking that they need to keep the noise, sorry, keep the doors closed and the noise down due to the conditions on the licence. Officers reported excessive noise on the following dates. Twenty-first of August twenty-two, twenty-first of August twenty-two, third of September, the fifth of November, the third of December, the sixteenth of December, and the twentieth of January of this year.
So you're speaking too fast for my hearing.
Yeah, I'll slow down.
Could you repeat all of those dates again?
Yes, the twentieth of August. Then the twenty-first, that same weekend. The third of September. The fifth of November. The third of December. Sixteenth of December. And the twentieth of January of this year.
Would you mind repeating, so what the actual, what the dates are?
They, they, officers reported the noise was excessive.
Thank you.
Hopefully that will be along the chronology if you need to. So I'd also like to show you the body cam footage of the twentieth of August, which again shows an example of the visits that were carried out by police where they actually speak to the venue about the noise. It should be noted that during a police visit on the seventh of January of this year, there was a report of a decimal metre being used. This may have been down to a different promoter running the event or management trying to implement changes. In relation to the concern of drug-taking at the premises, although it is accepted that many premises have the same challenge of deterring drug use at licensed premises, it is found that the customers who attend this venue think it is acceptable to overtly take drugs at this venue and that there are insufficient measures in place. These reports within the chronology mention the lack of searching and comments from the venue staff reinforces this. This overt drug use could also be due to the type of events that were being held or potentially the clientele that they were attracting. Specific examples relating to drug use within the chronology include a male who was arrested for drunken disordering from the premises and then found to have drugs on them. And this was on the twenty-third of October two thousand and twenty-two. Then on the, on the fourth of December, one male became highly intoxicated and had to clutch on to the bike rail and was needing medical assistance. And then another incident on the fourteenth of January where a female went into cardiac arrest due to taking ketamine. You will see with the email conversation with Mr Chisnall on the seventeenth of January that the most recent incident, the female going into cardiac arrest on the fourteenth of January, upset DPS and his team. And he outlined his intention to tighten his drug policy as a result. A debrief was carried out after this incident, and it was established that the female had been in the venue less than twenty minutes. Although the fire staff were quick to react to the incident and get assistance, failings were highlighted showing that more could have been done in terms of searching and checks on entry. In relation to the police intervention, I hope you see that there's a number of emails and letters and that we've continually engaged with the venue to encourage improvement and compliance. I've highlighted the police licensing engagement on the chronology in a different colour. So I hope that will help. Communication ranges from initially supportive recommendations in the form of an email or telephone to then start warnings with formal letters and meetings, such as the letter sent to him on the nineteenth of December, reference MLB four. In this letter, I've stated that police need to see serious improvements following the weekend of the third and fourth of December. I appreciate there's a lot of documents to look through, and again, I apologise for serving on the late team yesterday. But I think the letters sent to Mr Chisnall on the twenty-sixth of August and the nineteenth of December give the best flavour of the opinion and stipulations from what the police. My last letter dated the nineteenth of December also reminded Mr Chisnall again formally about the issue of noise. To quote my letter, this needs to be remedied by monitoring the level of noise outside the premises and ensuring it's an acceptable level. Keep doors closed at the premises to minimise the impact and in compliance with your premises licence. My letter dated on the nineteenth of December also states, I suggest you cease holding dance promoter events until both you and the statutory authorities are satisfied that you are promoting the licensing objectives and carrying out licensable activity in a responsible way. This did not happen, however, if it had, I suspect we would not be here today. The final paragraph of my last letter advises that we will be checking for improvements and considering our options with a mention of an option of a review. In terms of our situation, this venue is still very much within the police intervention process and one that we are closely monitoring. Part of the police intervention process is that we give licensees the opportunity to improve and rectify issues themselves before submitting a review. And that was the stage that we were at in December. Since then, there's been a slight improvement and reduction in police reports. I think it would be unfair to say Mr Chisnall shows a lack of regard to the concerns raised. I feel in some cases he has let the issues roll on without addressing them sooner. You can see that there is a want for compliance in some of the email responses received. I feel the reason that the venue's being reviewed today is due to a bad combination of poor management, the running of the risk events at the venue, and regularly allowing the venue to be hired out as third parties without tight controls or supervision. It appears the licence holder's business plans to hire the premises out to event organisers and promoters, so they bring the customers. However, it appears that the organisers are then given free rein to run and manage the premises themselves, some of them who have limited knowledge or understanding of the licensing objectives or of specific conditions attached to that licence that need to be complied with. Technically, these organisers have no legal responsibility, so the events are run under the licence holder, trusting the promoters to operate while risking his licence. Those attending the dance events that have taken place at the venue traditionally want music excessively loud for lots of base. I believe that the reason that there's continually been an issue of excessive noise experienced is due to the standard not being supervised or controlled by the venue management when the events are taking place. In terms of the outcome of the review, as mentioned, although police were not at the point of review themselves, I suspect it may have taken place in the near future. We support the application submitted by Norwich City Council enforcement officers and feel that changes need to be made. The response we received from Mr Chisnall in relation to today's hearing is that he intends to close the premises due to the lease ran out. It is for the committee to decide what they feel will be the best course of action to remedy these issues. And then if I could show you the body cam footage when you're ready, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think before we do that, so that we can have the most of the meeting in public, and then we'll switch, we'll close down the link and we'll switch. So are there any questions first of all for Environmental Protection on the noise issues? And then also for Michelle, please, relating to what we've heard so far? Yeah, councillor Kidman, please.
So fairly early in the report, you mentioned that the licensee was advised that he needed temporary event licenses. And if, if the event was open above what he was already licensed for. So would that include, if he was leasing the premises to outside promoters, would he need a temporary licence for doing that?
Yeah, he was, I understand, he was hiring, he was allowing the venues to bring their event, like the promoters. But he was putting the temporary event notice on his, under his name. So yeah, he would have still needed that. But he, he in effect is still responsible even when it was with temporary event licenses and licenses.
And I've got a follow-up to that here then if I may. And you said that the police on the seventh of December noted that a noise meter was being used, which was positive. And I was wondering, was this due to positive management changes? Or was it, I think, I think you mentioned, or was it a different promoter? And if it was a different promoter, would there have been a temporary licence?
No, no, he just, he used to just open it, operate under his, and they would just come in and run the event really. So it could have been that it was somebody else there, and it was their night. But like I said, I just wanted to raise the fact that there was, there was one, which was a positive. And that was, that was in January. So it was fairly recently. But obviously, I don't know when all the plates have come in for noise, it might have been after that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bridget Colson, please.
Yeah, mine's to Michelle. So the temporary event, did he use all his temporary event that was up then? Because there's only so many that you have a year, isn't there?
Yeah, he did have, he was close to the sort of maximum, but he had submitted the variation as well. So that was in, so he had operated with both. So yes, he did pretty much have most of them at the beginning.
And it seems like in the reports, every time people visited the property, he was in the pizza place next door, it seemed to be actually at the actual establishment where we needed him to be.
That's right, yeah. I'd spoken to him a couple of times, a number of times actually about it. And I don't know if it was the sort of stress of priority businesses perhaps. But you know, as I said in my letter, this one is, this is on high risk to you, and this is the one that's the priority, and this is the one that you need to be up. And in fairness, there was one incident on the visit, I'll just check the date, that he, after that phone call on the Friday, he had actually stood there, made himself known to police or wanted to be seen to be engaging. But obviously that, that wasn't consistent.
And I just want, and also the doors. And I think there was a condition that the doors should be closed and the windows. But it seemed like the doors were left open nearly all the time when the visits occurred. I mean, do you think they were opened all the time or?
The difficulty with the venue is that there's, there's no lobby, you see. There's, as soon as you open them up, you're straight into the venue. And he had tried to put a lobby, oh sorry. He had tried to put a lobby, oh sorry, a great big wooden barrier as soon as, immediately as soon as you're walking through the doors. I personally didn't like that because I felt if you needed to get out of the venue in a hurry, that would sort of hinder any sort of big evacuation. So I spoke to the fire about that and the fire had been out and done a visit. But my understanding was that he had put that in to try and help with the noise. But I think, you know, like I said, that there were measures in place, but obviously the opening of the doors was the, was the real issue. But on some of the reports, it almost looked like the doors were being left open until police were seen standing there watching and then they were then closing them.
Thank you.
I think again, you know, the difficulty we've had is obviously when it was the hot summer as well, he was obviously trying to keep it open for some ventilation and obviously sort of coking, but that's not an excuse.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we normally, we have, normally have the licensee and DPS with us for questions and we don't have that opportunity. The licensee wrote to us and said that they won't be attending today. I mean, in the latest email to officers, they have claimed that the, that the venue had sorted out all the issues, including the noise issue and said that there were noise monitors in place. There was a claim that the council didn't provide a limit, so therefore you didn't know what the limit was. So I'll ask council officers about that. And it says, the last line of, it says, all noise issues have been resolved. All concerns from the police and the council have been addressed. All measures taken as advised from the fire service. Is that a true statement?
To best my knowledge, the, the premises is now closed.
Okay.
So therefore there's no noise.
So by definition, there's, there's no noise. Okay. Had the premises remained open, would you have considered that the, that the issues had been resolved?
No, I've got no evidence to suggest that they would have been resolved.
Okay, thank you. And referencing the, the noise monitors, did a environmental protection officer work with the venue to reach a number, a limit?
I am unable to answer that. I would have to look at the files, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I think that's quite important. I wondered if you'd be able to, if you'd be able to do that. Should we pause later on? I think he does that.
Yes, Chair. And guessing is going to be unfortunately proving a negative, it will be quite difficult. But you've got the email from the licensor that says a figure has never been set. So at the moment, that's the evidence you've got. As to why, I don't know. And it might be tricky to find on the record whether or not environmental health have ever been asked to go down and inspect.
And aside from this, we also have evidence from the police where the police have asked the venue to turn down the volume and environmental protection have done the same. There's clearly been complaints. So you have had correspondence with the, with the licensee relating to noise. I think just in the, in the interest of giving the licensee an opportunity to, to put the case forward, if we could just have a look to see if we have actually been attended with a view to setting a limit, that would be helpful for us. But I note your other answer, the committee should note your other answer about the not being satisfied that other measures have been met.
I think it's important to know that, I would just say, if there's any information about the noise levels, that despite issuing, given a noise level, it doesn't necessarily, you know, that, that a statutory nuisance may not occur, we would have to measure inside and outside. And given the fact that when this notice was served, there was a, there was a noise eighteen decibels higher than the rest of Prince of Wales Road outside of the premises. And it suggests that the noise were, the, the levels were extremely high within, within the venue.
Yes, and the, the licensee has stated that they have never exceeded a high level and you obviously dispute that claim.
So it's arbitrary whether we set a limit. What matters is, is whether that limit or whether that noise is causing a statutory nuisance to residents, but we will look. The, the difficulty, our chair, is that the steel of this model is on long-term six.
Okay, that's, that's understood. So yes, you, you've described the, the statutory level and the eighteen decibels above background levels is, is higher than.
And if you are in the base frequency, which gives it an extra six, it's, it's quite significant or very significant in fact that the noise outside of that premises. And I don't know if you want me to go through the, the statement from the food officer as well. He, he represents that, but he, in his statement, he suggests or believes that, that the rest of Prince of Wales Road, you couldn't hear noise coming out of the premises. This was, in his opinion, the only one that could be heard outside.
Yes, again, it's, it's, it's an opinion of a, of a specific officer rather than some proof in the form of data.
Yeah. Again, with regards to statutory nuisance, everything is in the opinion of the officer. So he is a qualified environmental health officer and he has experience in statutory nuisance. So it was his opinion. You know, he did comment that you couldn't hear each other speaking inside the venue. Again, that, that's not an issue as well. They had, he had to suspend his meeting the other day when the premises was closed to continue.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bridget Colton, please.
Yeah, can I just wonder, this, it says the main noise complaint has been sorted after doing some investigation and find an old sealed hollow air vent leading to the back car park. It sounded like a giant base tube. This is now being filled with sound, sound film fully. I don't know whether, when was that done? Do we know when that was done? And I mean, have we had noise complaints after that? It's been done, do you know?
What date was that?
Um, that's on the last one that we.
That was yesterday?
Yeah, the last one that we had on the thirteenth of April. From Richard Chisnall. The third line down.
So I, I think this is essentially a claim that the, the main noise issue that has raised concern with, with, with residents and where the reading was taken from eighteen decibels above. There's a claim here that that has been resolved. Could you comment on that, please?
I can't. Again, without looking at the file, I don't know if further visits have been taken, has taken place. And he said that the officer leading on this case has found on the surface of the noise and the request to review has subsequently been absent from work. But again, if the premises are shut, there will be no nuisance.
I've got a question as well. What date was the premises, sorry. What date was the, the premises actually shut? So when did she ever stop opening the doors to patients?
I know they closed last weekend, up to the Easter, whatever Easter day closed, he hadn't opened. Before that, I understand it was the odd sort of like not opening the Friday and just opening the Saturday. And I think some of that was due to people letting him down and deciding it's not worth opening due to sort of footfalls. So I can't give you a, a specific answer, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you. David, please.
Thank you, Chair. I was just thinking there's some data you could have and great deal of sympathy for Victor, who is standing in for, I think, two people who aren't here in respect of matters he hasn't personally investigated. The email from the premises licence holder notes, he has filled in an old sealed hollow air tube leading to the back car park where noise complaints relate into the front of the premises, because if they were, it's not clear that they'd be around.
Yeah, my understanding is that the front of Prince of Wales Road.
Okay, thank you. And additionally, the police have submitted their own evidence to suggest that the front is, is a, is an issue also. Thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, are there any more questions for?
Just something to add. There was one of the emails sent from the last, it told us the date, the fourth of April, saying that he decided to close. And we know from that date that he hadn't been opening as, as much. If that helps at all.
Okay, thanks, yes.
Yeah, just something else to add. It's the licence holder's job to comply with his conditions. It's not something he can say, environmental haven't been round, therefore I've ignored it. He needs to fulfil his conditions. The responsibility is his.
Okay, thank you. Also noted. Yeah, councillor Kidman, please.
Just going back, because my question was related to the comment that in December, the licence holder was given a chance and time to improve. But the picture I was trying to get was how often, he was opening between December and sort of now. And so in order to get a picture of how he was addressing and improving his management and other issues, but if he's hardly been opening, I'm finding it difficult to see how he's put his improvement into practice.
That's right. And that's where I'm at with it, to be honest. Because obviously, like I said, in December, we were, we were very concerned about the place and hopefully you can tell that by the letters. And obviously since then, he, he hasn't been opening and most of the time is closed. So it's just not really a true reflection of, to find out how he's actually operating. And then the, the last visits that we've had, one of them taken on the eleventh, you know, there was only seven customers in. And then had thirty the whole evening. So it was just not really sort of their way of managing it. So we don't really know the answer to how well the improvements have been. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as, I'll just give us a wider picture, has footfall in Prince of Wales Road dropped off generally in recent months?
We always get that anyway. After Christmas, we often get, especially now, the way we sort of bills and cost of living and things. We, we often see a now sort of after Christmas, January, February, some of the venues are quite lucky in the fact that they managed to maintain their, their level of customers. But you know, for as long as I've been here, that's always been the quiet month for a few of them. And you don't get the footfall. People normally sort of hibernate. And then what we think normally happens is Easter time, then they come back out with a nicer weather. So yeah, it is kind of expected anyway that it would be actually quiet.
Okay, thanks. So some of the papers that we've received late, including email exchanges between yourself, Michelle, and the licence holder, some of this will be put into the public domain so that people who may be interested in this case will be able to, to see some further detail. But it does highlight some significant effort on your part communicating with the licensee and making, giving the licensee a great deal of opportunity to improve the, the way that they manage the premises. And you've, you've stated a couple of times that there was some effort to do so. Do you consider that the efforts that the licensee showed to, to improve were inadequate? And do you, do you still consider that to be the case? And, and do you have any further thoughts on the management as a DPS at the moment, please?
I think when I sort of referred to my two letters in particular, the last one being back in December, there doesn't appear to be just one issue. Obviously, the environmental health here, just here from the element of noise. But from our point of view, it was just an overall concern about how it was run, who was actually supervising it. I still have those concerns, if I'm honest, just because I think although we haven't got any recent reports, it could be that if he had a particularly busy night in January, February, it may not have been run as well as we would have hoped. Yeah, I don't, I just don't have the confidence, if I'm honest. And like I said, we have put a lot of effort into it in terms of trying to work with him. But there's only so much we can do with letters and emails.
Thank you. And the committee has heard about some serious incidents that occurred at this premises. Are they, are those incidents, the type of incident that are typical in places along Prince of Wales Road and other later areas? Or are they relatively unique to this particular premises?
In terms of, you know, in top scale vulnerable people, that's something that we come across. Unfortunately, probably too much, more than we would like, but that's why we've got the agencies there. What we're very thankful for, the SOS and the straight present, they're there because people always do do something silly, whether it's take, take drugs that they shouldn't have done or drink too much. So that's not, that's not something that we, we often see, but it can happen, you know. And we are expected to, to see that occasionally and we can then call on agencies to help. And there are sort of procedures in, in place and a lot of the venues have their own medical and welfare procedures. So they will deal with it in-house. They won't have to have police intervene. The unfortunate one we had sort of back in December was the fact that the officer just couldn't bear to watch anymore because he was particularly concerned. And again, I hope that the footage will, will give you an overview. You can hear on the, on the actual footage that he's, he's asked the control room to keep an eye on the CCTV cameras, just to keep an eye on him because he's, he's concerned about a particular guy. So, you know, like I said, it's not, it's not like it's never happened before to anywhere else, but it's just how it's managed. And the fear I've got is that it wasn't particularly managed. And that incident back in December was particularly the worst for me. As you probably sort of saw in the, in the email correspondence, I was quite frustrated. We had various meetings. And it hasn't been consistent to that. I think if there was more than one of those incidents, then we would be sitting here a lot, lot sooner.
Okay. And the young person that was, that went into cardiac arrest, presumably they were, they were okay in the end?
Yes, same with him.
Yeah, that's good to hear. Okay, thank you. Any more questions? And then if there are none, I think we'd better pause for Rachel to return and then see the footage as well. So I think we'll, we'll pause and is that sensible, David?
It is sensible, Chair. Do you wish to officially pause as it were, close down the meeting and reopen at a later time this afternoon?
Yes, because I don't think that when Rachel returns, if she has any more information for us, that, that needn't necessarily be in the public, in, in a public meeting. So we can, we can reference it in, in the later meeting when it goes public again. So I would, shall we select a time approximately? So we will have a break. So if we say approximately quarter past four for determination, or should we say half past four?
I was thinking five, Chair. Well, I don't know how long the footage is going to be, the police wish to show you.
Yes, that's actually relevant.
One clip is ten minutes and the other one's about two and a half, so it won't take too long.
Okay, in that case, so we could, we could resume. I would say that let's aim to resume at four o'clock.
Thank you for waiting, welcome back. Welcome back everybody to Norwich City Council Licensing Subcommittee, Friday fourteenth of April twenty twenty three. We're considering the review of a premises licence for Sherbet Lemon thirty five Prince of Wales Road in Norwich. And the decision of the council of the committee is unanimous and that is to revoke the licence at this premises. David will read out the reasons, the committee's reasons for doing so. And a further detailed letter will be sent to the applicant following this meeting. After which there will be a right of appeal which David will also describe. It is unfortunate for the committee today that we haven't had the applicant, sorry, the licensee with us to defend his position. But we have taken into account the correspondence that he sent us and all of the, all of the evidence that we've heard from police licensing and the environmental protection. So David please.
Thank you Chair. Yes, these are summary bullet points only. Betty has found, proved that there are significant problems under the crime and disorder prevention and public nuisance licensing objectives. Committee notes the police have made significant efforts to provide advice and assistance to the premises but these have proved unsuccessful. Committee has noted video footage showing the DPS failing to exercise any management control in a situation where police were attending and the public was at risk. Committee has noted video footage of breach conditions regarding opening doors other than for ingress and egress causing noise nuisance. Committee in summary has no confidence in management. The committee notes the designated premises supervisor, DPS, is also sole director of the linked company holding the premises licence. And therefore this cannot just be a DPS issue. The committee accepts the evidence provided by the police and the environmental protection team as reliable evidence. The committee does not accept the suggestion of Mr Chisholm that all noise issues have been solved. And notes that regarding filling a pipe at the rear, noise issues also occur at the front of the premises. And the committee has directly heard from the police and council and notes that there can And the committee has directly heard from the police and council and notes that their concerns remain. The committee has considered the nature of the problems, these arise from failure of management. The only appropriate decision to support the licensing objectives is felt to be to revoke the licence. Other available actions in section 52 bracket four of the licensing act 2003 in the committee's view do not adequately address the causes of problems arising at these premises. Regarding rights of appeal, then the rights appeal may be exercised within 21 days of receipt of written notification petition appeal against and reference should be made to schedule five of the act. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I think that draws the meeting to a close. Thank you to everyone for attending and apologies for the lateness and my phone as well. Thank you.